We'll bring this regular city council meeting over at 6:00 if you'll stand. We'll have a invocation. Senator Father, we thank you for this evening and we thank you for the opportunity to make decisions for our citizens. We thank you for sparing us of some of the calamities that have touched other parts of the nation like the hurricanes and the fires and that type of thing. We ask that you continue to help us in that regard. And we ask that tonight that you guide us in the decisions we make that they be for the best of our community as a whole. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a quorum present tonight. Go to citizens' comments. We have two that have emailed in. First one is two comments from Doc Hall. Listening to the last board meeting, it became obvious that whatever priority system Hondo has for street maintenance is broken down. Of course, some potholes need emergency filling unless somebody incurred damage to their vehicle. However, most of the expense from limited funds are for more lasting repair. I urge the council to adopt a plan to do this and publicize the priorities and stick with it and back Mike Smith and Buddy Stewart in executing it. Many people will not be happy no matter what the plan is, but at least repairs will get done somewhere. I don't know what Buddy Stewart will propose tonight. Number two, can the council reinforce the hours for dove hunting near Hondo? Right now, you can hear gunshots anytime from the first light to darkness. This is upsetting to many domestic animals. And on opening day last Saturday, we had three winged doves flop in the yard and die, also upsetting to pets. Hours like no shooting before 8:00 a.m. or after 7:30 p.m., that at least gives times for animals to get out and relieve themselves. Doc Hall, 706 33rd Street. The other one to mayor and city council. My name is Edward Cardenas, and I am one of the IT Network administrators for the city of Hondo. I wrote this letter to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to our city. I'm also proud to be part of Team Hondo. Prior to working for the city, I was unemployed for several painful months. I applied to the city, and by the grace of God, Kim Davis and Elsie Purcell saw potential in me. They saw potential in a beat-down, disabled Marine Corps veteran that suffers from depression more often than not. It is hard for me to open up about my issues. I would rather just take them with me to the grave without anyone being the wiser. Kim, however, likes to pry. She notices when my spark is gone and reaches out to me. She has pulled me from the absence several times by simply showing me she cares. We all hear about suicide prevention, but to actually see a person proactively looking for the signs and symptoms is remarkable. I would expect one of my fellow Marines to save my life with unflinching disregard to their own safety. That is what we train for, but to be saved twice in an invisible war that claims hundreds of service members each year by a civilian mother of three is beyond anything I could ever imagine. Some people are worth jumping into the fire for, and I believe she is one of them. By this time, my writing, I fear, has begun to fall on deaf ears. Selective hearing is not conducive to progress. Personal agendas and hidden hatred tear down everything we as Team Hondo has strived toward. In all honesty, I love each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I'm sure it is hard to be a civil servant in these crazy times. I humbly urge you as both an employee and as a citizen of Hondo to always put Hondo first. I really believe this is God's country since He brought me here, and I found redemption and purpose. I will be the first to say that Kim is no saint, and she has made mistakes. But in paraprising the good book, I state, whichever you has not sinned is free to cast the first stone. In closing, I would like to say I'm grateful to Kim and the wonderful library staff for instilling me the Team Hondo spirit. Kim Wonderwoman Davis is my hero. Go Hondo Owls. Thank you for your time, and God bless. Eddie Cardenas. The only other, we had Mr. Lopez sign up, but he wants to speak during the public hearing on item eight. I think that's all we have. Moving on to item six, discuss and consider approving the minutes from the city council budget workshop from July the 15th, 2020, meeting August 24th, 2020, regular meeting, and the September 8th, 2020, special meeting. Again, a lot of minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not a motion, they'd be approved. Present it, sir.
In terms of the 24th.
Okay.
In terms of the minutes for the 24th on page nine, under item 20, I have trouble and suspect others might have trouble making sense out of that paragraph. I suspect that everything is, the intent is there, but it doesn't read and say, I'm not sure what it says.
Well, I changed it a little bit. Second sentence you're talking about.
Well, it says, "City attorney stated that this was an ordinance for complaints under the city charter." He added that the ordinance is not aimed at anything specifically its violation of the charter of what? Specifically, it's violation of the charter, but it gives the city council to conduct an investigation. That's, you know, our minutes are important. People refer back to them in times to come, and I'd like to see that refined where it makes more sense.
I just inserted "our violations" for "its violations."
Okay.
Instead of "its," I put "all violations of the charter." But it gives the city council to conduct an investigation.
Well, if we can make that correction, I'd be fine with that.
As usual, there's a lot of corrections to these minutes, but I've made most of the corrections, and if you want to make that a special item under the...
Well, on the eighth, and again, the eighth is just, well, I appreciate the quick turnaround on the minutes. Again, I think it's important that they be as accurate as possible. It says, "Notice was given that a regular city council," is that correct, or should it be special city council?
I'll change that, too.
Special?
Yeah.
All right. And then, on page three, where it says, "Mayor Dan are read an email from Lynn McVeigh," it should be Pro Tim McEnally.
I didn't catch that.
And on page six, there are words missing evidently, or words misstated. You go down in the paragraph that starts council, and that's where we want to move from. You go down about the fifth or sixth sentence. Also, there could be certain perceptions of the relationship between the city council and Chamber of Commerce.
Where are you at on that?
On page six. Ms. Davis emphasized that in no way did she ask the citizen to remove the post and have, I believe that should be "or," or request his employer to have a discussion with his employee. Ms. Davis stated that subsequently, the employee sent an email that he choose remove.
I inserted two in there.
Perhaps she would choose to remove the post, but did she never ask him to remove his post?
I inserted two in there.
Okay. And then further on, Mayor Pro Tim McEnally stated that there is a letter with eight allegations. He asked if those issues, rather than they, could be discussed in the executive session. As I recall, the attorney replied, but we don't have that reply.
I'll change that. Took me about an hour and a half this afternoon to look over these minutes to catch all these errors, so I may have missed some.
And I realize, like I say, I appreciate the quick turnaround, but we do have the recordings. And in the event that people want to look back at minutes, they're most likely going to go to the printed minutes, and...
That's why I go over them.
That's why I went over them. So with those corrections, with those corrections only, I would move that be approved?
As corrected.
I would like the minister to reflect the opinion's reply. I think we can find that from the recording.
Okay, your motion to approve Ms. Corrected?
Corrected.
With corrections.
Do we have any others, corrections or additions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as the motion carries. Did you vote aye, Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir.
Item number seven, city manager reports, starting with National Night Out.
I'm going to ask chief to go ahead and come up and talk about National Night Out.
Mayor Council, just a brief on National Night Out. We are tentatively scheduled for National Night Out on October 6th. Right now, we are on a second stage of meetings with our staff and to determine what's the best direction or what's course to take, whether to cancel the National Night Out or to move forward with it. We plan to meet again on Wednesday to try to iron out some of the concerns that we have, so I should have more of an update hopefully by the end of this week. We are tentatively thinking of maybe having some sort of a drive-through out at the fairgrounds as long as we're able to reach out to, for donations and of that nature due to the lack of time that we have left. So we're going to definitely look into it, consider it, and if we can get all the safety concerns ironed out, then we will probably be moving forward, coming back and updating council within.
What is your date, chief?
I'm sorry?
Your date.
The date?
National Night Out.
October 6th. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, city staff had a meeting with Tech Dot representatives on Thursday per the request of council, and I just wanted to go over the outcome of that meeting with you and maybe get some feedback from council. So we met with representatives both locally and from the San Antonio office, and what they said was that how this process would work is, of course, they would contract with an outside agency to do a speed study. That will take them a couple of months to conduct that. Once that is done, or how that is done, is they will run radar locations at different segments in the town, and then they'll do those at non-peak hours, and that they'll take the 85th percentile of 125 cars each direction from those non-peak hours. And the reason I wanted to come back and show this with council was that depending on what that 85th percentile is, we run the risk of it actually increasing the speed and not just decreasing the speed. So we wanted to make sure those results then would be submitted to the traffic division, and then the traffic division would ultimately make a recommendation to council about some type of ordinance.
What about input from the city as far as accidents that have happened that the chief or somebody else can provide?
We talked about that. We also talked about economic development and growth and how that end of town had experienced some economic development and growth and that there were people pulling across multiple lanes. They said they used to take that into consideration. They don't take that into consideration as much now. So we just wanted to make sure that before we pressed forward, y'all were fully aware that it could result in an increase in speed and not necessarily a decrease. Said they would take input, but again, their major objective is to keep traffic flowing.
Well, if they want, what input we have, they want to increase the speed?
That, what input would we have if they want to increase it?
Yeah, we're sure against that.
I understand. But again, it's all going to be based off of their results, and their results could indicate an increase in speed. We're not set to have one of these. We asked if we were set to have one of these traffic studies anytime soon, and they said no, not unless we push forward with this and requesting it.
What is actually, what is actually the study they're going to do? How fast the cars go through Hondo, or how slow?
Yes, how fast or how slow, and what they look at is the 85th percentile of the 125 cars.
Well, we shouldn't have a problem with that because 90% of the vehicles that come through Hondo are speeding.
But if I'm understanding right, they're saying that whatever 85% of the people are traveling, that's what they're going to follow?
That's what they're setting the speed at. That's correct.
I've heard this before, and we've talked about it in past years, and I'm on the record for whoever wants to hear that that's not very smart, Tech Dot.
I agree. Well, I think if they moved that direction, we'd get some political help.
So we want to go ahead and ask them to do the speed study, and we'll deal with the outcomes.
They don't have any choice, do they?
We can.
If we wanted to look at it.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move forward with that.
Crazy.
Moving to the next item, the Hondo Public Library Medina County and Vulcan Materials grant. There's something in your packet. So Hondo Public Library was contacted by three of the county school districts, Hondo ISD, DeHennes ISD, and Natalia ISD, to provide access to ebooks for students and staff during this time when their physical libraries are more difficult to access and because school libraries have fewer e-resources. This process brought up the question of other county residents needing these and other resources such as our databases. To provide access to all county residents at no cost, Hondo Public Library stood before the Medina County Commissioners Court, and Elsie was successful in asking them to offset the cost of area fee, of the out-of-area fees and the increased cost of overdrive based on population served and the purchase of additional e-resources. Medina County agreed to provide half of the requested amount for one year, and Vulcan Materials agreed to cover the other half. It was total of a $10,000 grant. Hondo Public Library will track county usage of resources to document the benefits to the county and its citizens for any future funding requests. The biggest priority was helping out those three school districts.
And there will be a ceremony on Wednesday at the library.
So what this means is that our library is providing them with physical ebooks or with access?
Access.
Internet access?
Not internet access, but access to checking out ebooks. So there's a program called Overdrive. And Overdrive, think of it as a digital catalog, and so they can go in and they can check out ebooks on their tablets or whatever's been issued by the districts, and they'll be using probably whatever Wi-Fi resources are issued by the districts as well. This just gives us the opportunity, and we participate in an Overdrive consortium, and as that consortium goes, there are several libraries, so it isn't just the library books that we buy, it's the library books that all the other entities that participate in our Overdrive consortium buy as well. So they have access to all of those books. The next item is we'll be, Genevieve will be coming in, and we'll be recognizing our Arc Into the Future Scholarship Award winners. If you recall, we talked a while back about Microsoft giving us a grant for our welding program, and these lovely individuals were the recipients of that grant, and we're going to give all of them a certificate tonight, recognize them, and take a photo. So we have Lorena Gonzalez. Lorena?
I couldn't interrupt now. What did they do?
These are the people that got the scholarships for the welding program.
Oh, okay.
The $2,000.
Each?
Yes, each. Congratulations. Juan Gonzalez? Congratulations. Cannon Jacob Haywood? Gabriela Lopez? Ruben Sanchez? Alfred Resendez? And Rosalyn Resendez?
I just want you to know that that's father and daughter.
Congratulations. Thanks to y'all. Thanks to y'all, we kicked off our welding program.
Fantastic.
Thank y'all. Congratulations. Genevieve? So like, these folks here, they're at the starting process, or they finished, or where are they at?
They're just at the beginning. They just started class.
So they just started?
They just started.
They restarted it, right?
Yes, yes. Remember, in the spring, we had to cancel because of COVID, so this is the new one for the fall. So they started in August 24th or something like that. I can't introduce the structure, but they're super excited. There's one young lady, Chief, I don't remember her name, but she is a high school student. Lorena, she's a high school student, and so that's the first time they've heard anything like that with a high school student coming in and taking a knee to the floor.
Fantastic.
And so that was for this semester. What about next semester?
Next semester, we'll see who will enroll. We're hoping that the same will enroll, but they're only qualified for the scholarship for one semester.
Okay.
How long is it going to take them for them to say, like, it's over with and they get a certificate or whatever?
This program that they're in right now, it's a one-year program.
One year?
Right. But they are welding. We have videos, and they're like, really, it's amazing to go out there and they are in cage, really, but it's fun to watch.
Fantastic.
I believe they were in the paper.
Oh, they were, okay. I did, I'm kind of seeing the paper, but...
Half a dollar's go to second semester, too.
Correct, yes.
Good job. Thank you, Genevieve.
All right. So moving on to the next item, in city managers' report, we have an update on COVID-19 programs and potential programs for utility relief for residents. So as you all know, the EDC did the small business grants, and one of the things that we've been talking about, working on with our per capita funding, is some type of grant program for citizens. And before we move too far down the road, we wanted to kind of get this in front of council for you to at least see the application. One of the restrictions that we do have is that although we encourage them to use it for utilities, we can't force them to use it for utilities. That would be one of the things that we encourage them to do, is to pay off their utility bills, outstanding utility bills with this. They will be required to provide some supplemental information that states that they were impacted by COVID and how they were impacted by COVID, whether that be from an employer or some other documentation. And so we would be looking at moving forward with this program if council seems to think this is a good idea.
So what purposes are allowed for it to be used for?
Rent and utilities primarily.
Rent and utilities.
Like she said, this is kind of work in progress, and first place, I think, I'm trying to get them to move up to 150,000, which I think we can do, which would take care of 150 applicants for the $1,000, and also require some letter or something in there of termination or furlough or whatever, so it's people that have actually been fired or whatever that would take this program. So like I say, we've still got some fine tuning. We were hoping tonight that y'all would move on with it and hopefully without having to come back to council for additional action, but we can.
Rent, mortgage, utilities, electricity, phone, internet, and the third dot is additional expenses as a result of increased costs from individuals household being home more than usual. And in the application, there's places to document all of that.
And we can't force them to use the money for that, but we highly encourage them to use it for utilities and rent.
It's very similar instruction, very similar to our EDA grant, our EDC grants.
And the idea is that it would be around 1,000?
Max 1,000.
Maximum 1,000 for applications?
Yes.
Excuse me, that doesn't mean that everyone's going to get 1,000. They can get up to 1,000.
No, up to 1,000, and they'll have to provide some kind of documentation that shows they were impacted negatively by COVID. And what we would do is we would take this and ask for reimbursement from the CARES Act funding.
Who determines the amount?
It will be the review team, and what they submit is documentation.
I would guess the majority would be $1,000.
Now, do they have a template that they're going to be going off of in order to determine the cost or what they get?
No. It'll be what they submit as their bills and their backup and their invoicing and all of that.
Very similar to the business program where they submitted that they needed money for rent, employee costs, that type of thing, and then they could take that money and spend it on one of those items.
I'm just comparing it to the EDC program and looking at the committee, and of course, our attorney be reviewing applications for legal compliance, and so basically it comes down to four people, and all of whom are with the city of Hondo.
Yes.
I think we ought to have somebody, Matt.
I think there's advantage. I think this group would be familiar with the need already. I don't know if there's an advantage of having anyone else from the city.
We could. I see the committee meeting quite a bit in the beginning.
Where is that list?
Yeah, I was looking for it, too.
Under history, the second paragraph on page one, the committee will consist of... And as mayor said, that 92 would be, we would be looking at increasing it to 150.
And this money is coming from?
We would be looking to be reimbursed through the CARES Act.
As we mentioned earlier, that it's very difficult to find purposes to spend the CARES money because so many things we were not eligible to do, but we came up with this as a way to spend most of the rest of the money after we've had the city reimbursements for expenses. Because as y'all may remember, the city gets 550,000, and so far, we've spent 200,000 to 300,000 on reimbursements.
Right, at 300,000, I believe.
And so what we have left, we've come up with a way to, we don't want to lose it. We have to do this by the end of the year, calendar year.
So the anticipation is that this might be underway by the end of September?
Yes. Our goal is to as soon as possible launch the program.
These people need the money now.
So you need action on this? You just need...
It's not only agendas and action items, but I'm just kind of, if the consensus is, y'all like the program and all, move forward, then...
Yes, and I think it ought to be possibly put on the next agenda so we can approve it. I think it's a good idea.
That would make us wait two weeks.
Can we add an additional person, someone from the EDC?
Sure.
Mr. Ainsley?
If he'd be willing.
I know he's got a lot on his plate, but not...
That, the dollar figure that you came up with, I mean, is there additional money that we could add?
Well, we had 92 because that's kind of what we might, but I said we need to raise it to 150.
So I think the purpose of the report tonight was to say unless there's any major objection, we plan on going ahead and rolling out and not having to come back for an action item unless... Y'all feel warranted to have to come back for. Okay.
If you want to ask Dee to come in, we'll go to item eight.
Before we go to item eight, Mayor, on, I would like on the City Managers' Report that we add. Being that we're on, on City Managers' Report, that we add. Where we add with the city streets, potholes, and all that, I know we have it on item 15 tonight, but that what we can cover at every meeting.
We're just going to make it a standing agenda item on every meeting. Is that okay?
If we, if we carry it under City Manager's Report, then it's not an action item, but as it is right here, it can be an action, number 18 is an action item.
Well, yeah, that's, that's good, I just want it to be on the agenda at every, every meeting so we can discuss it.
It is, we, we have it already on the 28th.
Okay, moving to item eight, to hold a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021. We'll ask Dee to give us a preamble, and then I'll open for a public hearing.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The council voted on August the 24th to hold a public hearing on the proposed 2020, 2021 budget. To provide members of council, our citizens and staff, the opportunity to provide input and discuss the proposed budget. Since that meeting, we have added at council's request, support to the Medina County Fair Association in the amount of $10,000 with hotel motel occupancy tax. Support the proposed air race events at the South Texas Regional Airport with a $12,500 from hotel motel occupancy tax. And voted to fund a second school resource officer at 100% at $54,500 with Honda ISD. Funding only the second vehicle for that officer.
If you don't have anything to add, we'll open the public hearing at 6:30. Ask Mr. Lopez to come in if he wants to address the council on the public hearing.
Mayor, this, this bud, this item here about the, but he's at the school, I mean, it's not set in stone, right? It can change?
No, because down the agenda, we're going to be, council is going to be approving the budget or not approving. That's when you'd bring up anything if you wanted to omit or, or not omit. Lopez, you wanted to address the council on the item number eight, and the public hearing has been opened.
Yes, my name is Shae Lopez, I'm a candidate for city council election for place four on November the 3rd. And I'm here to talk about the, the proposed budget for 2020, 2021. I'm, I saw the budget, it says that they're proposing $600,000 to renew the old police station and some of the, the city hall. And I think that my, I'm, I am proposing and recommending that that money be used to. One is to give the, the city employees a pay raise. That they, at least last year, they didn't get an across-the-board pay raise. I'm proposing that the, that the council consider giving the, the city workers, since they've been essential workers during all this pandemic, doing all the work that the, that the, that the, that they need to do for the city, for the city to be operating. And that the council consider giving them some type of pay raise, either a 2% or 3% pay raise. The other thing is the, the streets also, concerning the, I know we have 1.2, I think, million from last year that was not, from this particular year. That was not, that has not been used for the streets, and then you have another, another million dollars for the upcoming, for this new proposed 2020, 21 budget. But like we, like I heard somebody say that we do need a plan, what's the plan, you know? Where, where are we going to be starting, where, what streets are going to be fixed, where are the potholes that are going to be fixed, what streets are we going to be on? And when is this going to start, you know? The other thing concerning the budget is that I haven't seen any type, nothing from the city, and I don't know what needs to be done if the. If the Home Rule Charter needs to be adjusted or something to, to deal with affordable housing, you know? There's a lot of folks here that are low income, that have, that have dilapidated, dilapidated housing, you know? So we need something to bring in some type of, to put in some money, start putting in some money from the budget to, to bring in some affordable housing into the city. So I think that's very important, you know? So those are, those are the, the items that I wanted to touch on concerning the, the fiscal year budget, you know, mainly the, the pay raise for the city workers. Another thing I want to mention is not concerning the, the budget, is that I got some, I got some complaints from some folks saying that. That the city, since you're not letting folks come into the chambers to listen on to the meeting, that you put some speakers out in the, in the outside so that they can listen to the meeting. Some people don't have iPhones or computers to, to listen to the meeting live, so some people would like to come and sit outside and listen to the meetings. Right now, they can't, if, if you don't have a phone, if you don't have a computer, you can't listen to the meeting. So I wish the council would, you know, address that issue and put some, I know you had some speakers out there before, but they took them off, and I don't know what happened, you know? So that's an important issue. The other thing, going back to the budget, I think that the council also needs to put some money in for the spay, spay and neutering. The, the pets, you know, because we need, there's a lot of pets out in the streets, you know, and there's a lot of low-income families that need, that need some help with, you know, the spay and neutering. And I know the city didn't conduct any spay and neutering this fiscal year, so we're looking forward that the city, you know, put in some money so that that spay and neutering can be done. Thank you very much.
Do we have any call-ins for, for the public hearing on this item? So that closes, 636. Item number nine, discussing and consider approving the City of Hondo Economic Development Corporation fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Okay, good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before you use our proposed 2020 and 21 budget, as you can see, we've kept everything pretty much flat. I also presented this budget to the Board of Directors for Economic Development Corporation, and they approved it in our August meeting. I'm sure you've noticed, we currently do not have any major capital projects. Again, remember, this is a budget living document, and we can always amend it if we need to. Sales tax, as in the past, we're recommending to be very conservative, that we keep the budget conservative. Trends are still showing a potential increase. So the protect, projected revenues for 2020 and 21 are $490,000, and the projected expenditures for 2020 and 21 are a total of $344,496,000. Wait, that's wrong, $344,496,000. So staff is recommending approving the City of Hondo Economic Development Corporation fiscal year 2020, 21 budget as presented.
I want to correct your presentation, I think you have the wrong working capital balance as of 9/30/20. But that's.
I'm sorry, sir?
I think you have the wrong number for the phys, for the fund balance as of 9/30/20, but you can make that correct. Mine is this, 20?
No, the top is the, is the audited number, and then we have this year's. So you start with 20, on 9/30/20, $2,366,343. Then it has the revenues and expenses for this year, and where we project to end 21.
Okay, we can visit that later, but.
That's the way all of your budget pages, the beginning of your budget pages will look.
You have the fund balance as of 9/30/21 listed as a one for, for 9/30/20.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about, questions about the budget? Pretty simple, there's not much extra in it this year.
Go ahead and approve it, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to go ahead and prove.
Second.
I'll give you a second to prove that the Economic Development Corporation, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I'll pay with a motion, say aye. Thank you, Ms. Thor.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discussing and consider ordinance number 123309-20, and ordinance making appropriations for the support of the City of Hondo, Texas fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021. And adopting the annual budget for the City of Hondo for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year and setting an effective date. Do you have any comments, Ms. Thor?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I would just like to point out in that ordinance, the section three, that this budget will raise more in revenues from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $58,405, which is a 3.47% increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rolls this year is $12,613.
Councilman Torres, you wanted to address on that one item, on the budget?
Well, the question I had was if we can come back and change it, whether to. Decrease it in our favor.
You mean after the budget's approved or, or now? Because we're, tonight, we're approving the budget as, as those changes are made.
Right, and my question is, can we come back and? The only, the reason I'm asking that, Mayor, is that because I believe there's still questions being raised at the school board meeting, and, and the meeting's not till next week. And they may have different opinions as far as participating in the cost.
We could do a budget, I think if I understand your question correctly, you're saying that they may decide to throw in more funds for support, and you're asking if we can do a revenue line adjustment later, yes, we can.
We can amend it, amend the budget. Or anytime during the coming year. Any other questions pertaining the, we've had some changes since we've had the budget workshops and all, but they've all been.
I got one, Mayor, would you explain the, the money that we allocated for the, for the spay and neuter? Like, I understand that we didn't do anything in the 2019, 2020 budget.
Correct.
Can you explain, so everybody know, is aware of it, why it wasn't utilized, and, and why we're doing now for it?
With the fund nine and the street funds?
No, he's talking about spay and neuter.
Oh, the spay and neuter, sorry. So the spay and neuter, yes, we had a couple of issues. One is that the NIP, or the SNAP program is no longer available. We have been trying to book them to come out, and they were having difficulty, they have one van that comes out of Houston. And we did do some spay and neuter through the local vet's office to offset that. However, the SNAP mobile is not going to be coming out any longer, they have done away with that program. So we've been discussing two options, or three options, actually. One option would be to contract with the local vet to do all of our spay and neutering, because there are no more mobile vet clinics that will come out. The second one would be to look at utilizing vets in the local area if we can negotiate a better price. And the third option would be to use SNAP over off of the Calabra Road area in San Antonio. And we've been working with all three of those entities to try to negotiate a price. Most of them have not wanted to come out during COVID. The, and that's, the first part of the year was just having difficulty getting SNAP arranged. Chief can speak to that more eloquently than I can, because his team is the one that tries to coordinate with them. But just from my experience with NIP and TUC, they have had difficulty getting them to come out as well. And Dr. Lawler has said that her program will no longer be funded through the SNAP program, so the van is no longer available. So we're having to come up with different solutions to continue a spay and neuter program.
Okay, and how much money was allocated for the neuter spay?
$6,000.
Excuse me?
$6,000.
And how much of that was used in the 2019, 2020?
Between the, the ones that they did from TNR, which is trap, neuter and release, which is the same thing, it's a spay program, but for feral cats, and the spay and neuter, I believe, almost all of it, correct, Chief? So it was spent, it was just spent through the local vet versus through the mobile clinic program, and it was for.
We have $6,000 in the budget for?
Next year.
2020, 21?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What we were averaging was about $3,000 per clinic, but since the clinics haven't been able to come out, we've been taking them in and having them spayed or neutered at the vet's office here. And we're trying to negotiate a flat rate.
But we do have $6,000 in the budget.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I have the book, I've looked through it, I remember going through the, all the budget workshops that we went through. And I recall from, over the last several years, we established a program where our employees do receive a yearly increase in their pay. Is that still built into the budget?
Yes, sir, it's a merit increase, it's based off of our merit program, and it can be anywhere between. The way it works is that bell curve that we've discussed before, so it could be anywhere between a 2.5 to a 5%, depending on performance, some people end up with a growth plan instead. But the majority of employees get 2.5 to 5%, there's a very small group that don't get a raise.
Who determines that number?
The, that average, it's done by, we take all of the evaluations, we put them in a, a chart, and the median and the midpoint are determined. And wherever that comes out across the board is the center, and it's one-third below and one-third above. We use a statistical formula to do it.
And we've done this for two or three years now, right?
Yes, sir, I think this is, will be our fourth year.
As far as the raises are concerned, or the decisions, that comes from the department head, right? To you.
The evaluations. The evaluations come from the, the divisions to the department, and then the department to me. And the departments all review the divisions to make sure that all the divisions across the board look the same. I review all the departments to make sure all the departments across the board look the same. And then all of those are compiled into one spreadsheet, and then that spreadsheet calculates the midpoint and the median, and then it goes from there, and, and it's one-third above and one-third below. So even if you don't score a 3.0, you can still get a raise. If you're like a 2.7, and say that's within that middle third range, then you still get the 2.5% rate, raise.
And we use the, because we don't know what the actual figures will be, we use 3% across the board as.
A budget number.
A budget number.
This past year, when you did, when they turned in those scores and evaluations or whatever, Kim, did you change any of them?
No.
In regards to the $600,000 that we have budgeted for, for the renovation, what does that entail exactly?
It's not budgeted, it's just right now, it's a placeholder, it's not actually in the budget. It was an estimate that was put in there, that number is not as, an expense, it's just in the CIP program as a placeholder.
Just in case we, we want to proceed.
Just in case, because we've talked about it for several years, and I would venture a guess that at least in this building, because I learned recently on my scooter that there are some challenges with ADA compliance, that it may be. that it may be a little more challenging than this building in particular.
And, and what we're talking about in terms of capital improvement program, the placeholder, is renovations here, which you just mentioned, the needs for ADA, and renovations to the building that was the police department.
Correct.
And, and we know that we have space needs.
Yes.
And we've been looking forward to using that space over there, but it can't be used just as it is.
Yes, sir, and they're little things. They're things like changing out the flooring, changing out the paint, upgrading the lighting, up, looking at the HVAC systems and making sure they're balanced and in good use when they were replaced last. The roof in this building leaks, it will need to be redone, redone, have some work done on it. The roof in that building was redone recently. I believe the HVAC in that building was replaced recently. And as you know, the HVAC, the HVAC out there in this building was replaced recently. The HVAC in here has not been. So it's, it's basically more of a cosmetic look. There will be some, no real structural changes, except perhaps to the restrooms. The restrooms will probably have to be made one-person stalls, just simply because of the space and needed, needs for ADA compliance and things. Potentially widening some of the doors. The dais is not ADA-friendly. So things like that will all be looked at.
And the roof?
The roof is a big challenge on this building because it's flat.
Well, the thought some time ago was that the monies that we, that we would get from selling the electrical yard and the post office would be the, most of the funds we'd use for the renovation of these properties.
Yes, sir.
The, the properties that we did sell, is that where that money went into that?
It, it went into the general fund, and we have that line item. The, the electric properties.
Right, the electric properties.
Yes, went into the general fund balance.
And it's not earmarked right now?
It is not earmarked right now.
Does item 13 have anything to do with the budget? Because I see that it's recommended fees on item 13, and, and why was it put after the discussion and consideration of the, of the budget?
We're not counting those fees in the budget. One of the things that happened was, after your budget workshops, the Park Board had a meeting, and they've been working on this for a while. And they made a recommendation, so Carissa will be presenting their recommendation. So we're not calculating them as part of the revenues. If council decides tonight that you want to approve them, they would be part of the newly adopted fee schedule. If council decides tonight, you don't want to take action on them, we'll ask you to remove them from the fee schedule and approve it. But we're not counting those revenues in the budget, simply because they came in so late.
But you would amend, you would amend the budget later on if council approves of it?
If council approves the fees, we'll amend the budget later. But again, since we don't know the number of rentals and things, what we may wait and do is, is just let the line item be over budget, and then come back next year, because it's a revenue and not an expense. And then come back next year with one year's worth of data and make a recommendation that this is what you should budget.
But this recommendation comes from the Parks Board?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions before we act on the budget? And I'm open for a motion to, to approve the budget under ordinance number 123309-20.
Hold the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11, hold a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 tax rate. Ms. Wolfman?
Evening again, Mayor and Council. The tax rate calculated, we calculated out at the voter approval rate of .4940, which is lower than the 2019, 2020 tax rate of .5105. But as stated previously, it will raise more in tax revenue. This rate will be necessary to support the budget that you have just approved. And we're open for a public hearing for anyone who would like to have input on the tax rate.
We'll open the public hearing at 6:52. Do we have any, anybody's called in on that?
Yes, sir.
No? We have nobody from the outside that indicated they want to speak to it. We'll close the public hearing at 6:53. Go to item 12, discussing, consider ordinance number 123409-20, an ordinance, City Council of the City of Hondo, Texas, setting the ad valorem tax rate at .4940 cents per $100 valuation for maintenance and operations and debt service of the municipal government of the City of Hondo for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes, and providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. This item will be a roll call vote item. City has adopted, the council tonight has adopted the budget for the 2021 year to fund the regular city maintenance and operation of that budget. The city will need to have a .3796. And to be able to pay our bonds, our sinking fund, a tax rate needs to be .1144 per $100 valuation. The sinking fund at .1144 is anticipated to generate $404,172. And that's approximately $3,384 greater than last year's budget. The maintenance and operation tax rate is anticipated to generate $1,341,117 in property tax revenue. And it's approximately $55,021 greater than that of 1920, 19, 2019, 2020 budget. That's a total increase of $58,405. Staff recommends the council adopt the proposed sinking tax rate at .1144 to pay down the city's debt, and to adopt the maintenance and operation tax rate at .3796 for maintenance and operations.
You heard the recommendation from staff. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mayor, I have the written out motion.
Okay.
It's in your packets.
Mayor, I moved that the City of Hondo levy and adopted tax rate for the tax year 2020 that will raise more taxes than last year's tax rate by 3.47%. And the tax rate shall be 0.4940. And that rate shall be made up of 0.3796 for maintenance and operation, and 0.1144 for debt service, and providing when taxes shall become due October 1st, 2020, and shall become delinquent if not paid by January 31st, 2021.
Give us a second to that.
Second.
All right, we will, unless y'all have any other discussion on this, we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Torres.
Mayor, I've got, I've got one question before we do, do that. How much actually, money-wise, on a $100 evaluation, how much, how much was, is, is the increase, more or less?
Do you have that, Ms. Wolfman?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
The amount for a household, an increase?
On a, I don't know what the percentage is, 3.47%, but I don't know on a $100,000. I can tell you on a $100,000 valued house, it would be point, it would be $494,000.
Oh, that's the total, right?
Yeah, that's total amount, yeah.
Of course.
Be $494,000.
Their tax rate's not going up. If their ad valorem, if their praise amount went up, then they're paying more taxes.
Right.
But their tax rate actually went down a little bit for the city.
It's not really going to increase their, unless, right, Mayor, unless their property...
Unless their valuation changed.
Unless their property valuation is, becomes higher.
Which we don't have no control over that?
No, we do not.
We don't have no control over that.
Even so, it's only $55,000 on the maintenance part of the thing. I think, what, 30 on the other, so...
I'm glad you asked that question there, because there's a lot of people that don't, don't understand that. They, they think it's us that are increasing the, the tax rate, and it's not really us, it's just the, the value of their property that's going up, which, which is causing their taxes to go up.
That's a good point, because a lot of people don't, they think the city's just raising their taxes if their, if their bill went up.
The tax rate is actually going down.
Going down.
It's going down, yeah.
Any other questions before we do the roll call? Again, we'll start with Councilman Torres.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, and I think we have that sheet to sign, don't we? And we have something that we have to fill that in? I don't see it in here.
That wasn't in there.
It will be put in the front of the, budget book.
We have to sign it, right?
I don't think that is required to be signed this year.
Okay.
It's required to do a roll call vote, but I don't believe it requires signatures.
Okay. And the motion carries. Moving on to item 13, presentation by the Parks Board, recommended fee, fee, Carissa Gonzalez.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay. In your packet this evening, you'll see two separate applications that staff has drafted. One is the outdoor fitness application, and the second is the special events permit application. I'm going to go ahead and start with the outdoor fitness, because it was initiated with the citizens' request. Staff was approached with the request to host fitness classes in our local parks. The independent instructor and fitness program would require individuals to pay a membership fee in order to participate in the classes held in our parks. Because the inquiry would allow an individual to use a city facility for a profit event, staff believed it is necessary to have an agreement with an associated rental fee. Staff attended procedures from other cities to determine the most appropriate way to move forward with the request, and creating a permit process was what we found to be in the best interest of the city, while providing a responsive application process to the enquirer. Once applications meet the requirement of the application, a one-year permit would be issued. Users would be required to reapply for renewal of their permit. Once the permit process was outlined, staff reflected on appropriate fees. Because we already have some fees adopted in our fee schedule for some of our parks, like City Park 1, City Park 2, we reflected on cost of the community center and senior center rental fees. And doing so, we based the new recommended fees for any other city parks that did not already have a fee associated with the event. The special events application creates a process for inquiries of any kind of special event that is requested to be held in our parks, including festivals, concerts, walk of run events, rallies, or just small community gatherings. As you know, we've had, we have several different city and independent organization-led events held throughout the year, but we have had no formal process currently in place to help us navigate through these events. This application will outline for staff and users the appropriate steps for each party to see the event from the beginning through the end. Both applications ask for information regarding the user as well as the event. Asking these questions while user makes the initial request will allow staff to determine if the location requested is the most appropriate for the type of use, or if there's a better location to recommend. It will also allow for better coordination between the user and the city firms that might be needed for the event. The fees attached were reviewed and recommended by our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These fees and these documents will be reviewed annually with recommendations for improvements or increase and decreases will be brought forward to council for approval. Some of these fees, like I mentioned, will be maybe forgotten. If you're on that page, City Park 1, City Park 2, Matielopis Pavilion, some of the other fees pass the park, were already adopted. The event with an admission fee, the city already has a carnival license fee, and that's what we use for the event with an admission fee slash ticketed event. The other fees were just based off the facilities and what they have to offer for the users, based on the fees, you know, the services that we can have there. These processes were not created to make it challenging, but just to ensure that we could provide a thorough and consistent process and tracking system for these types of events. Lastly, I just want to highlight that there are more city-sponsored or city-co-sponsored events that we participate in, that we would give consideration for fees to be waived. And also, our nonprofit discount would be applicable to these fees as well, so I think that's a 50%, so these fees would be cut in half for any of our nonprofit users. At this time, I'll take any questions.
Carissa, I just want to clarify, these fees are based on special events, not if I am John Smith and I want to rent the park for my child's party. These would be for fees that are generating some type of revenue for the promoter, correct?
Uh, correct. And not necessarily that has to be revenue create, but, so we've had a couple of inquiries that came in that are more charity or ministry-driven, having gatherings at Memorial Square, military appreciation events that have been had at Memorial Square. Those are probably the two more common that we've seen. I would anticipate that we wouldn't see too many of these type of events. I haven't seen that in the past few years. But what I have seen, I do believe that the, the fee would be waived because they're more city-sponsored. But it does at least give us a place to start in case we start to get more or different types of inquiries, like payments, um, things like that.
Pretty hard to understand what she's saying. She's saying that these park fees here are what we already have, or is there an increase in these different fees for the...
They're new, Mayor.
They're, all these are new fees for the parks and all? Because I, I thought we charged for the parks.
We do for City Park 1 and 2, and what she's saying is these would be for special events. Like if somebody wanted to do an outdoor fitness program, similar to what we do with the softball and those programs that rent our baseball fields, this would be similar to that.
So there's a separate set of fees for Joe Blow that just wants to use the city parks?
Wants to rent the park for the day, or...
Yeah, but that, there are fees for that.
Yes.
Why would the outdoor fitness, sorry, go ahead. Why would the outdoor fitness be different? Why would we charge more than, say, someone that's running the, the baseball fields for tournaments?
I think it, I think their logic was the outdoor fitness is a year-long permit versus a one-time event.
Okay, I got it.
Makes sense?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm trying to speak for her, because I know she's hard to understand, but...
I don't know, Mayor, myself, I, I'm against, I'm against changing and raising fees on anything. I mean, by God, the whole nation is, is hurt by this pandemic, and here we are going up on stuff that, in my opinion, can wait. Unless we, is it necessary that we do this tonight?
No.
Do you do increases?
No, which is why we, we didn't put a revenue into the budget, and we didn't come back to y'all with a budget, because we weren't sure how y'all would feel.
But, I heard you say that. This is, this item 13 is entirely different, it's entirely new. It doesn't have anything to do with our regular fees that we already have that we're going to discuss in item 14.
It's in, it's in item 14, but we can adopt the ordinance with the removal of those fees. We weren't sure which way y'all would go, so we put them in, and we can take them out just as easily as we put them in.
Okay, so, so in other words, we can table this item?
Yes, you could decide.
And we can go on ahead and go to item 14?
You could decide that it... You could decide that at this time, y'all don't want to take any action on the new proposed fees that you don't want to move forward with them, and then have them removed in the ordinance in number fourteen.
And it's not on here as an action item anyway.
It is not, it was just a presentation.
Okay.
And I applaud the Parks Board for working with our city staff and researching this with other cities. I have a cousin and his wife who work for, and I don't know that I can name the outfit that does it, but they're up early in the morning with an exercise program, and then they have competitions, and they utilize the parks in San Antonio. And there's fees. And there are fees, I, I know it's, some are tired of hearing it, but our fees represent costs. None of our fees have to do with, hey, let's just make some money. Our fees represent costs, and so in terms of that sort of thing, I applaud the Parks Board and our staff for bringing this forward. I, I'm sensitive to the fact, nobody, in no year do people like for things to go up. And I'm sensitive to the fact that this year is particular in that way. But at the same time, I think this is something we need to have.
And nothing going up, because these will all be new fees, not applied to ones we already have for our citizens.
Right, it's, they're new fees, right.
So, like I said, it's a presentation. Unless we have any other comments, we'll go ahead and move to the action item, which is fourteen, discussing Consider Artist Number 123509-20 in Ordinance City of Hondo, Texas, Amending Appendix A Fee Schedule of the Code of Ordinances of City Hondo by amending pertinent sections to reflect current fees, increased fees, deleted fees, and new fees, providing a repealer clause and providing perseverance and setting an effective date. So, got me pretty well confused, but, go ahead.
On September the 12th, 2016, when we had our first presentation of the comprehensive fee schedule, it is Appendix A that is attached. It does already include those new fees, but as has already been stated, if you do not want those new fees in there, you can adopt with the removal of those new fees. Finance staff recommends that the City Council approve Ordinance 1235-09-20 to reflect current fees, increased fees, deleted fees, and also the new fees.
You know, we discussed the fee schedule in length at the budget workshop.
Yes, sir, we did.
And whatever changes, I don't remember what they were, but, but we all pretty much came to a conclusion on those fees. I'd recommend that if, if these new fees want to be presented, they presented, be presented later as an amendment to the budget.
And to be clear, those special event fees appear on A6-4?
Yes, sir. And it carries over, I believe, to the next page?
And the outdoor fitness permit is on A6-5?
Yes.
So, if we're gonna wait on those, then we would approve this fee schedule with the exception of those two sections.
That's correct.
Mayor, one thing I would like to see, you know, they, they presented to us the adopted fiscal year 2021 fees, but... And I know that we probably went over it in the workshop, but it's hard to remember what we, what we decided then to now. I would like to see what, which items would have an increase and which items are left. This just shows the proposed...
New ones.
Highlighted, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the old ones were.
Yeah.
Is that in our budget book?
It is. Everything that was highlighted in the yellow. Were changes.
Page number, I actually have the book here.
It's turned sideways, but it's A, A6-1, I believe, is what it is.
So the old fees are in the budget book?
Yes.
Yes.
As well as the new ones.
Well, too many days have gone by since we had the budget meeting.
Yes, sir, a lot of days.
So let me ask this, so I don't have to look through the whole budget book that, that we should be aware of? Are there many increases in, in the...
No, sir, if you recall...
Most of the fees stayed the same?
Most of the, most of the fees stayed the same. If you recall, the only thing that changed would be, we deleted a lot of the duplication. We moved some of the things that were in development, or, yeah, in development or utilities into one or the other. The...
Okay.
The solid waste.
Well, the only reason I'm asking this is I agree with Counselor Torres, you know, right now, everybody's struggling, and we're gonna be up in fees here and there and there. You know, it's, it's kind of hard for everybody to, to, to come up with...
No, there was, there was...
Come up with the fees and...
There was not an increase.
Thank you.
Or not significant increases. And, and if you recall, with the solid waste, the city is going to absorb that 2% or 1.8% that the solid waste...
Built in the contract.
Right. Yes. That is built in their contract, but instead of passing that on this year to the customers, the city is going to absorb it.
What's the decision on item twelve? Motion?
Yeah. Mayor, I move that we adopt, the wording. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1235-09-20 with the exception of the fees for special events and outdoor exercise things.
Second?
Don't say the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to item fifteen, discussion regarding street maintenance.
Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I wanted to give you a little update on streets, particularly over the last couple of weeks, since the last update that I gave you all. The last council meeting, I was asked two questions that I would like to answer tonight. I was not able to give you exact answers last council. So the first question was, how much money have we spent on fixing potholes in the last few months? That amount is $5,325.21. Or it's equivalent to 99.36 tons of asphalt. You know, that's nearly 200,000 pounds of asphalt that our small street crew has put down in just a couple of months' time. And I, I personally find that very impressive when you're considering those are small jobs and small potholes that they're doing, not entire roads. So they've, they've been, they've been extremely busy. The second question was, how many drainage issues do we know about? To this date, 60-plus drainage issues have been identified by city staff and Freeland and Turk Engineering. So more than 60 areas we've, we've found that, that need, that need work on drainage. Since the last council update on August 24th, the Streets Division has completed 24 work orders, ranging from street sweeping, tree trimming, drainage issues, mowing, street repairs, and potholes. The number 24 work orders may not sound like a lot, but there's a lot pending that they're currently working on and haven't closed out yet. So a lot of these potholes, like I was saying with the asphalt, has a lot of preparation work before you can complete them. Same thing as thirteen and P. I've heard a few people ask why that hasn't been paved yet. And the reason being, the last week or two, we've been getting little spurts of rain here and there. We, we have to have that completely dried out before we put asphalt down, or it'll just, it'll just tear right back up. So we're just trying to keep the area maintained till we get it dry enough, and once we get it dry enough, then we'll be putting asphalt in there. Pertaining to the core samples for Fourteenth Street?
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On, on, you mentioned thirteen and Avenue P.
Yes, sir.
And, and there's complaints that, my understanding was that it was already completed. Now there's water standing, now that it's been repaired, there's a bunch of water standing at the intersection. So what do we do about that?
So there's still water standing because the base is at a lower elevation. Once we put asphalt in there, that'll build it up to the correct elevation to allow it to drain off.
So the job incomplete it yet?
No, that's what I said, it's not completed, sir. We still have to add asphalt, but we've been, we've been needing it to dry up because we can't put asphalt in on a wet base, it'll just mush around and get destroyed.
Well, that's, that's fine, but my understanding was that the job was completed already.
My understanding was it was not, because they still had to take care of that manhole.
That's Eleventh and P.
Before they could go ahead and complete it and put asphalt in.
I think it's Eleventh and P.
That's Eleventh and P.
Eleventh and P was, was completed.
I'm talking about the first complaint that we had on Avenue, on Thirteenth Street and Avenue P. I understand that there's water standing there, and I understand that that job was, had been completed already.
Mayor, I got an aye and full alert that that work would be taking place this week. I think...
It was Thirteenth and P.
Thirteenth and P, yes, that's what you're talking about.
I'm, yes, I'm talking about Thirteenth and P, but my understanding was that that job was completed already.
Someone, including me, may have gotten Thirteenth and P and Thirteenth and I confused because I know they've been working on, or had worked on both of them.
There's always something, no.
Or Eleventh and P, sorry.
So has it been completed or not?
Thirteenth and P has not been completed, it still needs to have asphalt. Eleventh and P has been completed.
100%?
100% on Eleventh and P.
I believe water has to go and finish concrete and around the valves, but as far as street work, they are done.
Kim, they started working on Thirteenth and Avenue P first. I don't know if y'all are getting confused with the, with the site that I'm talking about. Thirteenth and Avenue P, to my understanding, I don't remember if it was from you or, or Mike Smith, that that job was completed. And now I understand that when we had this little rain that we had in the last week or so, there's water standing at that intersection that was supposedly had been already completed. I'm not talking about Eleven and, and P, I know, I know the intersection on Eleven and P. And I don't know what else you've got for us to know, buddy, but I'm gonna, now that we're talking about potholes again, I'm, I'm gonna bring it up again, like I have in the last two council meetings. Y'all are working on work orders, and I still can't understand why y'all worked on Avenue U, I think, I believe it was between 23rd Circle and whatever, and I don't know, it's 23rd Street or it's called 24th right now. Y'all worked on potholes on Avenue U between those two streets, and the same thing happened that happened on Bernie Street. And I got pictures in my phone. Y'all fixed potholes at the end of the street, and there's potholes three feet from there in the middle of the street, and nothing was done. I don't understand why you're gonna go to one street and fix it and be done with it.
Right, correct, and I'll have to check into that, but leaving, leaving...
If it's a work order, I don't think that the customer's saying, I got one, two, three potholes in front of my house, and there's three, four more potholes three feet from them where they can all be repaired.
I understand, yes, sir. Now, I will say, leaving last council meeting, council suggested that when we're in an area, we complete the entire street segment. And that was the directive, leaving the council to the Street Department. I gave that directive that if you're doing a segment of street, you don't just do what's in front of that house, you do from one block to the other and do that segment. So I will definitely look into that and find out if there's a reason why.
Reason I was aware, because I had a citizen complain about that.
Okay. I, I do know we had some rain last week, so some of those potholes could have been too wet to mess with. So I will find out the reason why, and I will get that back to you.
I don't want no excuses, I want things done. If it was too wet in the middle, it had to have been wetter at the end of the side of the street than it would have been at the end of, in the middle of the street. That's one thing I can't understand, you know, and we, we kept, we keep telling you the issues with potholes, that's what people complain about, and it's not, in, in my view, it's not being done.
Yes, sir, do you mind giving me the, the area again, Avenue U?
Avenue U between 23rd Circle, and I think, I don't know if that next street is 23rd Street or 24th, the corner where the swimming pool is.
It's 24th.
Okay, 24th to 23rd Circle.
Okay, yes, sir, I'll look, I'll look into that.
And there's still ten potholes there.
Yes, sir, I'll definitely look into that. Okay, so pertaining to Fourteenth Street and Avenue I, with going to the engineer to get those roads redone, the first step was core samples. The core samples were taken in August 21st. Those core samples required additional grab samples, which were taken September 11th, this past Friday. We're still waiting to hear back from the engineer on those results. As soon as we hear something, we'll definitely pass it along.
Fourteenth and I.
Fourteenth, Fourteenth Street from U to M and Avenue I from, I believe it's 22nd to 26th.
And you've got core samples, and what other samples do you need now?
So they did core samples.
Uh huh.
Once they took those back and analyzed them, they, they required additional grab samples. These are, we assisted them, went out with the backhoe, scraped the asphalt off, and they had to take a bucket full of that material back to their lab to analyze it, assuming for compaction and stuff like that, so they can get an accurate idea of what that road's gonna take.
So we anticipate more time? How much long, how much longer before we get the engineers done and we actually get the bids out?
We put pressure on the engineers again today.
Right.
And they gave us kind of a preliminary answer, but again, it was preliminary. Their anticipation is it's gonna take a full-depth reclamation there, based on the core samples, that's why they did grab samples. But again, that's just their preliminary first blush after the core samples are done on both of those sites. So we...
So Avenue I is gonna be total reconstruction?
I, I know about Fourteenth, I don't know about I.
No.
I don't think any decision's been made on what...
Neither one of them have been, a decision has been made, but that's what the, that's what the preliminary samples look like.
Did she answer your question, Tom?
Yes.
What, what was it, maybe I didn't understand you because of the mask. What was the timeframe, what are we looking at?
We're trying to get samples back as quickly as possible. We called the engineer again today and put pressure on them again today and said, put pressure on the firm because we need samples back.
You don't have a timeframe?
No.
Yeah, these days with COVID going on, it's hard to say timeframes when it comes to some of the stuff. I mean, it just, it, it's all over the place. We, we've experienced it everywhere, that their, their schedules, you know, they, they can't give... it everywhere that their, their schedules, you know, they, they can't give us an actual timeline, so...
So, going back to potholes, other than work orders, what are we doing proactively to, to get ahead of these, to work on these? I mean, are, are you driving around looking for potholes, putting paint on them, and, and putting in work orders, or...
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I was out today, which I'll go over here in a little bit, not only doing that, but pointing out alley work that needs to be done this winter. Found a couple of water leaks that are reported so that they can get on them that it's in the streets. Yes, sir, we are very actively driving the city, looking, and trying to be proactive. Yes, sir, absolutely.
I mentioned it at the, at the last council meeting because of all this delay on 14th Street and Avenue I. Who's looking at all the streets that have, that have need, and need to be repaired, and who is prioritizing which streets go first? I'm not talking about work orders now. Who's prioritizing which streets need more attention than the others with this $1.4 million that we have, that we think not, not, not being spent?
So, council directed us to move in the direction of 14th and Avenue I?
No.
And, but council didn't, didn't...
Last, last council meeting, I specifically said...
The city manager presented multiple options, and that was the one that was...
I think you're misunderstanding his question. Go on to the next portion of your presentation, and I think that will answer his question.
Okay. Public, let's see where I'm at now. Public work staff has been putting together a list of street segments that the street division can do to prep the work and hire out to get them chip sealed. So, this is quicker work than having a total reconstruction, and it's more in the area of what our streets division can do right now. So, they go through and they prep the road, fix any imperfections, and, and get it ready to get it chip sealed. We currently do not have the capability of doing chip seal, so that is something we will have to hire out. We are also doing chip seals on the larger repairs and drainage areas that we have already completed so that it will hold up better through the cold and rainy season coming up soon. That being said, we are currently, only have a few warmer months where we can do asphalt work. This winter, we will need to focus on alley work. We currently already have dozens of pending alley work orders that we will need to address. The street segments that we're looking at to start, to do the prep work on, and in, not in any particular order, so I'm gonna give you a list of them that, that we come up with to start off with, and, and our reasoning of why. 17th Street from Avenue P to Avenue R, Avenue Q from 17th to 18th, 15th Street from Avenue R to Avenue U, 15th Street from Avenue N to Avenue R, Avenue S from 8th to 14th, and Avenue T from 8th to 11th. And on the south side, we'll have 26th Street from I to J, Avenue J from 22nd to 27th, 25th Street from Avenue J to Avenue K, and 26th Street from Avenue K to Avenue I. So, this is just to get us started, moving in that direction. These areas were picked using the previously submitted five-year street maintenance plan, and also the areas that we believe will have the least impact from aging utility infrastructure. Please note that we cannot guarantee any utility infrastructure that may need future work due to leaks, backups, or, or service taps. So, that being said, you know, our focus is in the areas that we've already redone the water lines and such like that. So, we have less of a chance to have to go and, and redig it up and tear it up. Same thing in the area where we're gonna do the community development block grant this year. Once that's completed, we can take care of that whole segmented area over there because all the utilities will be complete. But it, it will be impossible for us to replace all the utilities under every road. So, there's gonna be certain road segments that we'll have to just fix them with the aging infrastructure underneath. So, a lot, some of these here, such as the work that was all done on 15th Street from Avenue U all the way to Avenue N, that has a brand-new water line. The, the wastewater's mostly in the alleys, so we're in good shape there. That won't be one of the exact first jobs because that's gonna require a lot of curving. So, we'll jump on a job, you know, that already has a lot of the curving and a lot of the issues already worked out while we're getting curbing done on those streets. So, we're gonna be having multiple things going on in, in different areas to accomplish this. But, like I said, you know, a lot of this, you know, has to be above a certain degree, a certain temperature.
We're running out of time.
Correct. So...
So, let me ask you a question. 30, 30 and P, y'all did a repair, a pretty significant repair in, in that intersection. Why didn't we do the entire intersection? We, so I visited that intersection the other day, and we did three-quarters of the intersection. We left a quarter undone. Now, all the gravel at that splice is coming up.
Okay. So, again, we were trying to address each area as quickly as we could. You know, like that area, there was a lot of standing water.
And the reason I ask is because that was a pretty extensive job. I know that y'all spent some time out there. Y'all were shooting grades, and we just got new equipment. We're using that skid steer. But, we're there, and it, it goes to Councilman Vio's point. You know, we're there. Why not just do the entire, entire intersection? We honestly lacked about eight to 10 feet by the width of the road to do the entire intersection.
Yes, sir. No. And, and like I said, after last council meeting, when y'all gave us the, you know, the idea to do bigger areas when we're in them, we're definitely taking that into consideration. I would have to say, and I'd have to look back at the pictures, that maybe that area wasn't as bad at that point and may have gotten worse since then. I'm not sure. But...
That was a drainage issue, is what I'm...
Correct. And so, so on both sides of the road, because there's a crown on the road, and, and so, there's two drainage areas in the road. So, we, we addressed one side, but not the other.
On 33rd and P?
Yeah, so we know, we know, so we put a splice right in the middle of that proposed, that, that drainage area.
Mm-hmm.
Water's gonna get in and break it up.
Okay. So, from what I seen out there, the, the primary drainage was on the west side of that intersection.
Yeah. Do me a favor, go take a look at it.
So, but yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at it. And like I said, we are taking note of, of the direction that y'all would like us to, to tackle some of these things in those areas. We'll do, you know, bigger areas and whatnot.
I will, I will tell you that 11th and P minus the concrete around the valves looks good. I mean, it looks really good.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I even drove by there after the rain, and, and it was, it wasn't holding water. So...
Good.
You know, today I stopped because I thought that it generated a pothole already, but it wasn't. It was a, a valve that we, we have yet to box in, so...
Right. Yes, sir. I, I, I appreciate that, and I, I hope that everybody, when you see the streets guys out there, let them know if you think their job is doing good. They are, they are working very, very hard.
Buddy, it's not that y'all aren't doing a good job. My complaint is not, y'all not doing a good job. Mike, and you just said it just now. My complaint is that you're working at a site, and you get that fixed, and there's a pothole, whatever it is, three feet from that, and y'all leave it there. And you just said it on, on the intersect, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that. You just said it. You did what you did because you had other jobs to do. Finish that job correctly and go finish whatever, whatever is, is next on line. Don't, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, or...
You are, sir. I, I, I understand, and I agree with you.
Or what the deal is. And my complaint has been, this is the third meeting, that my complaint is the same one. If you had a street and it has potholes, fix the whole street, and then you're done with that street and go to the next one. Why would you wanna go back to that, that street? I, I just can't understand.
And I think what Buddy said, Johnny, was at the last meeting, he did take that direction, and he went and gave it to staff, so he's gonna have to follow up with them why they're...
But apparently, it didn't work because it wasn't done on Avenue U. I complained about Bernie Street, and it wasn't done, and I complained at two meetings, and, and the direction we gave them, it wasn't followed on Avenue U.
I have a question. What is the typical time on a turnaround for, for a work order? I think it, I think it is involved with your problem. Things don't happen overnight. That's, that's just very simple. If we have work orders that our crews are working on, we can say, "Yes, we're gonna start doing so and so, so and so," but the work order that's already in is there, and they're gonna address it. You can, you can make the same complaint at the next meeting. It'll be four times.
I, I understand what you're saying, John, but my, my, my concern, my, my thing is, you're fixing, if they had a work order on Avenue U...
I understand that.
Okay, let me finish saying. If they have a work order on Avenue U, did that worker specify five potholes? Or did it specify a pothole from the, from the, from the property owners to the street? Did it say five feet? Why were there five or six potholes fixed on Avenue U when you have three, three feet from that repair? You have five or six or 10 potholes. Why were those fixed?
I think the point's well taken that, that when they're out there with the equipment and all, why not fix the other potholes?
Right.
And I think that's what you've been saying for the last couple of meetings. It has merit.
And the point has been ignored that our staff is taking that into consideration.
Well, are they?
I don't think that Councilman Vio is ignoring that. I think he's...
No, I'm, our, our, I agree. That's a good change. Our, Mr. Stewart has agreed. That's a good change. He's instructed it. What I'm saying is that the work orders that are in the pipeline cannot necessarily be changed overnight. And I, I think that we can, we can waste some more time on this particular issue.
Let me ask one more question. Was there a work order for the potholes on Avenue U to be fixed between 23rd Circle and 24th Street?
I could not beat that. Certainly with you.
That's one thing that you need to look at. If there was a work order that was there that y'all, y'all went and worked on it because there was a work order, y'all should have fixed all, all the potholes on Avenue U.
Yes, sir.
For that work order.
I have one request. If you would send a list of those streets that you were talking about to council?
Yes, sir.
And I assume those are all would be done by, by staff and not be contracted.
So, staff will start and do the prep work, replacing, fixing any imperfections, failures in the road, getting them ready to be sealed with a chip seal. So, the only involvement of a contractor will be the final chip seal coat on those, on those segments on, once we're complete. And then also, curving. I'm sorry, curving. We do not do curving in-house as of right now. That will have to be something that's contracted out.
Let me ask you, what's gonna be the turnaround between staff going out there and getting it ready, taking care of the failures, imperfections, to chip seal?
Good question, and I've tried to come up with an answer for that already, but each segment requires different things. So, some questions, you know, or some segments are already have curving, they already have good positive drainage, and don't have too many failures, will be a lot quicker. Others where there's no curving, and we gotta establish property lines and have a contractor come in, put curving in, and, you know, 90% of the road is a failure that we gotta completely redo. So, I, I cannot give you a timeframe on that.
So, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis?
Exactly. But I will keep it in mind as we start going to develop a pattern and let you know. So, it is something that will help us with scheduling and planning as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Mayor Beaming to it, but Kim, I would like to, for y'all to email me or give me a copy of these, all these streets that...
We will. We'll send it out in an email.
That Buddy just mentioned that...
Yes, sir.
Are top priority.
Okay.
Anything else on item number?
Buddy, I, I just wanna personally thank you. You stepped into something that has, we've had problems with since Ms. Davis came on board.
Yes, sir.
Don't hold this that we're, we're picking on you, okay? Please, because I know you're trying your best. You just, you just took this position, and I don't want you to think that we're picking on you 100% of the time. These are questions that we've been asking for years now.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, please, keep that in mind.
Yes, sir. I, I, I thank you for, for telling me that.
And Buddy, I agree with Eric. You know, I'm, I'm not picking on you. It's just that if things are gonna be done, they, they, they need to be done properly.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Once y'all are there, y'all should be able to fix the, that section of the street completely and not have to worry to go back to it again.
Yes, sir. I appreciate, I appreciate that from y'all, and I know how frustrating it can be, and we're, 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 we're working through it. We've, we've made more progress this year on streets than quite a while, so we are making some headway. We're, we're making plans. We're, we're training the guys. We're, we've, you know, got new equipment that we're having to train them on, and, you know, they're, they're getting up there, you know? So, please, just bear with us. I understand the frustration, and, you know, we'll do, we'll do the best we can. I can guarantee you that.
Buddy, the frustration comes from, from citizens.
Yes, sir.
On us. There's a frustration.
I understand that.
I don't know about the rest council, but there's a frustration I have because I keep hearing it from the citizens, "When are y'all gonna repair the streets?" I hear that daily, daily. And I know you're trying to do the, the best, but, you know, it's just like I asked Mike at the last council meeting. Do we not have the enough manpower? Do we need to hire more people to do this? What, what do we need, what do we need to do?
How many times have we asked that? How many times have you and I asked that? And we were told, "Oh, no, we got plenty of help."
We got plenty of, and, and...
Let, let, let me just, just make this comment, and you, you were in the council with me years back. The street department that Buddy is in now, they used to have 10, 11, 12 guys working. How many guys you got working now? Not including Adam.
We have budgeted 10 employees.
How many do you have working right now besides Adam?
I believe we're missing two employees. So, we, we, I think...
So, you have seven, you have seven people working for you, okay? The years, all these years that we've been here, the city manager never had a problem getting somebody to mow the alleys, getting somebody to mow around the stop signs, getting somebody to patch. All, all this was going on at the same time. Now, all of a sudden, we're asking Buddy to turn around and do the same thing for us with seven people. But, yet, we ask him, "Do you need more help?" "No." And that comes from Kim and, and her supervisor. They don't need more help.
Mayor?
I don't understand that.
So, in, in defense of that, I would like to say, because I was involved in several of those conversations, is at the time, we did not want additional personnel because we needed to train the ones we had. If we didn't train the ones we had and added more to it, we're just making the problems worse. Now that we have trained, and, and we have a professional crew that is doing a good job out there, just like we did now, just like we did now, we, we put in for the, in the budget for an additional guy now. That, that was, that was talked about in, in part of the budget for this year, to add a second crew leader to the street. So, we are asking for more people now, but we're doing it in the right steps.
But I think what he's saying is that, that, you know, if we're somewhat understaffed, then let's get heavy. Don't add one person. Add three or four, and train them during the... Add three or four and train them during the winter. Do what you need to do and then that way, whenever it comes to, to asphalt season, we're ready to go. So, that, that's what he's trying to say.
Well, I, I agree, but it, it's hard to train during the winter because you can't work with asphalt in the winter. So, we'll just kind of be doing a waste out there. It's on the job training with this, you know? And it, we don't know how shorthanded we are until we get a trained crew to see exactly what we can do. And to be honest with you, with seven guys and we accomplished almost 200,000 pounds of asphalt and just small potholes and drainage issues in a couple of months, that to me is astonishing.
It is.
And I think that they keep going.
And again, you do have a wonderful crew. I'm not saying you don't. Your staff is tremendous and I applaud them for what they do.
And now we're asking for additional employees.
Our question has been, all these years, is get more people, get more people because obviously things aren't getting done, Buddy.
I understand.
That's all I'm saying because why did we go to, why did we cut, why did we cut employees? Why did we go down to seven employees when in the past we had plenty more and things were getting done? People weren't calling me and Johnny and Ann-Michelle and Bobby.
We have job openings posted for months trying to fill those positions.
I think we kind of beat this horse to a dead.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I've been here eight and a half years with three managers and I remember previous street directors standing here and saying, in almost these words, "When council appropriates money for better streets, we will have them." I understand some of what's not being said and it doesn't wash. I applaud our street crews, I applaud their supervisors and we cannot lay our current streets at the feet of this city manager or the previous one or the previous one.
All right.
It has to be shared.
Let's go ahead and move to, before we move to item 16. I've had a request.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Buddy.
Thank you.
I've had a request from Melissa Morales Fletcher, who represents the city manager, to address the council before item 16. I've consulted with the city attorney. He said it's acceptable, so we'll ask her to come in and, and address the council before we move into executive session. Ms. Fletcher, I would like you to address the council under citizens' comments. However, you're limited to three minutes and, and we need your, your, to cite your name and your address.
Yes, sir. Good morning and good evening, Mayor.
Can we wait for Councilman orders, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we wait for Councilman orders?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask something right now?
Sure.
I understand that Ms. Fletcher is Kim's representative. By law, Frank, is she only allowed to speak for three minutes?
That's this, this council's policy, three minutes per, you know, it's, it's the open comment period and that's the policy of the city council.
That's what I mean. She's going to, she's going to speak under the citizens' comment?
Correct.
Section that we have?
That's correct.
So, she's only allowed?
The three minutes.
Okay.
Unless y'all want to take action and allow her to speak longer, but under our council policy, it's just three minutes.
Well, I, I don't know whether that gives Ms. Fletcher enough time or not to, to say what she wants to say.
And, and my question is, is the discussion prior to six, to item 16 because of item 16 or is it simply citizens' comments? And if it's the first, then I wonder if three minutes is fair.
I don't think I'll take three minutes, to be frank with you, so I think it will be a non-issue.
Okay.
Okay? My name is Melissa Morales Fletcher. My, my address is 6243 West Interstate 10. That's my business address, Suite 132 in San Antonio, 78201. I represent Kim Davis, as y'all may know, related to her rights under the charter, the ordinance in federal and state law. And the only thing I want to say before you go into executive session tonight is, I want to make a few objections on her behalf. First, on her behalf, I object to item 16D taking place in executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. Moreover, there are some other items listed on there for 16E and F. And to the extent and that it's necessary, on behalf of Kim, I would object to any deliberations related to her employment, evaluation, duties, discipline or dismissal under the same section. And then finally, to the hearing of a complaint or charge against her during executive session under that same section of the government code. And then I would just request permission to be present when you do that session, in open session with, related to 16D. In here, I mean.
I think that'd probably be permissible as long as the court, you can't speak out. But in response to the other comments she made, Mr. Garza, you have any?
As the council's fully aware, as we've briefed you in the past, if we're going to be speaking performance, Ms. Davis's performance, she has a right to have that either in executive session or open session. By the open meetings law, she cannot have her legal counsel in the executive session session, so it will have to be an open session. So, if we're going to discuss her performance, it would have to be, and Ms. Davis prefers for it to be an open session, it would have to be an open session.
Before we close out Facebook and everything, do you prefer that it be in open session under item D? You said yes, right?
I said yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Then, but we will not go into executive session until we discuss item D under the executive session. If you'd like to have a seat?
Yeah, is that okay if I can sit back?
We just can't have any comments from you during it.
So, we're going to do D first?
Yes, sir.
D is the first thing and being moved into open session.
Can we do that, Frank? You know, being that it's, it's, it's under executive session and now we're having it in, in open session.
It's her right.
It's her right because we're, we're going to be discussing her conduct.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yes, sir.
All right, item D was placed on the discussion by three council people. So, whoever would like to speak to item D, we'll open it up now.
Well, first of all, we, the council, did not want to have this discussion in open session. Airing out all this dirty laundry should be handled, handled in executive session, but it is the right of the city manager to hold this in open session. It is her call. Regarding city manager's, Kim Davis's, performance and/or conduct with current, former employees, council members and citizens, confidence and trust has been lost. City manager's treatment of employees, council members and citizens at times has been disrespectful. The city manager has shown through her actions that she does not hold the city's business and its interest in the highest regard. Privileged confidential conversations with the city manager, whether it be with council, employees or citizens, have been placed on speakerphone where she has allowed and encouraged random employees to listen. Reportedly, she has used this as an opportunity to mock, make fun, discredit and belittle. This unprofessionalism only puts the city of Hondo in a vulnerable and compromising position. Such phone calls that discuss employee matters, HR issues, real estate dealings, contractor dealings and city operations. In no way should a privileged confidential conversation concerning the city of Hondo's business be treated with such disrespect. The city manager's bullying and use of vulgar language on multiple occasions has gotten increasingly worse. Name-calling with vulgar language in verbal and written form. This is unacceptable behavior for the leader of our city. There's no exceptions. All confidence and trust has been lost. The city of Hondo, its employees and its citizens are the reason why we are all here.
Do you have any specifics?
I'm not going to divulge the...
You have no specifics?
I have specifics, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a statement as well. The last few minutes have been very disheartening for the fact that there's been a whirlwind of serious concerns brought forth by the city council members, citizens, business owners and city of Hondo staff, past and present. These allegations and concerns are very serious in nature and have, in my opinion, disrupted our city government to the point of no return with our current city administrator. I, I strongly feel that we can no longer sit back and allow this misconduct, unprofessionalism and constant manipulation to continue. We cannot turn a blind eye to this. We're not doing, we're not doing our citizens, employees and our community any justice by allowing this any further. As a city council member, it is my duty to hold any concerns, mistreatment, misconduct towards any citizen, city of Hondo employee or my fellow council members in the forefront. That's it. Thank you.
Any specifics?
None that I want to share, Mayor.
Torres, you have anything to say?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I don't, I wasn't, I didn't write mine like Ann-Michelle and Bobby, I just jotted down some things that came to mind, of things that, that I experienced with, with Ms. Davis and why I feel that she's not the person to, that we need to have in city, representing our city. This, 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 when we hired Ms. Davis, we, I was warned about how she treated people, the actions that, that she did elsewhere. And long and behold, it didn't take her long to get rid of the city secretary. All right? What Ms., our city secretary did to one of our council persons is equivalent, if not worse, than what Kim did. I don't feel that we should ignore this, the fact that she, the way she treated and the way she, and, and we have, we, we have proof of what she said and called ugly names to our council, one of our council members. So, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I, since, since came, since we hired Kim, I supported her 110% and everybody sitting here knows that. I, I admired her, I gave her credit for everything she did. I was so manipulated, blinded, whatever you want to call it. Had people come to my house, employees come to my house in tears, asking for help. I came to her office, she sugarcoated everything. No, it wasn't that way, it didn't happen that way. You know, no, my supervisor was not asleep with his feet on the table and I had three or four different people that I asked and it was true. Nothing was done. It, you know, the discipline should have, should have been written up. Nothing ever happened. Okay? Three times, when we were different issues here in council, I asked her, "Kim, can we get in legal problems with this?" She said, "Yes." I said, "Okay, so why are we even talking about this?" Three times, she misled me and you, you probably remember what I'm talking about. How can I sit here and trust somebody when she literally lies to me and all of us here? Okay? It's another reason I, I don't feel that we can, we need to continue having her as our city manager. I received calls from employees complaining to me, telling me things that are ugly. I had one employee tell me just a couple of weeks ago, she comes to work, sometimes she sits in the car five to 10 minutes to pray, hoping that she doesn't piss off Ms. Davis so she can not get replaced. There's, and of course, she can go on and say that, that, you know, cover herself or, or say that I'm, that I'm making this up. I will guarantee you that what I'm saying is something that actually happened to me, something that was brought to my attention. In so many years, I feel bad because I ignored them. You and I talked, we talked about her several times, about her, the way she treated people, the way she was bullheaded, the way she treats people out in the public. I had business people call me to complain. She can't get along with anybody. And I'm to the point to where I, I, I can't, I can't just sit still and ignore it, even though we had a handful of employees come and say something different. If she would have treated all the employees equally, the way she did, the way she does her handful of favorites, we wouldn't be here tonight. But she doesn't. She doesn't. Last week, we, we told her, "Why, why did you do that? Why did you call this, this gentleman's employer?" Didn't matter. She went out and bragged on it. She said, "I'm going to do whatever I want." Because she knows that she had Mr. McAnally and Johnny on her side. So, she, she literally went and said that. It doesn't matter. She went to the Chamber of Commerce. This gentleman that, that did that article in, in the Facebook, he is a very honest person. He's in some of the boards, he's, he's very active in a Catholic church. This guy's an outstanding man. Why would you do that and then turn around and brag about it? You know, I, it's just things that, that the way she has acted, the way she's, she's, she bullies people every day, every day. She runs, manages by intimidation. That's no way to run our, our city. And I, I, you know, that needs to stop. Evidently, the reputation that Ms. Davis has is not good. I can tell you that I was in Castroville at my other store. There was a lady in there that worked for the city of Castroville for over 10 years. She said she had read the paper and she saw my shirt and we started talking. Well, in comes a banker from Forest State Bank. He says, "I bet I know who you're talking about." Right? In comes a guy from the school board, jumped right in. None of them had anything good to say about Ms. Davis, nothing. And that, that's a bad reputation. That, that is bad. It's embarrassing. When, before that lady walked out, she said, "I'm going to tell you, Mr. Torres." She said, "And I'm going to leave it at that." He said, "If y'all don't get rid of Kim Davis and her right-hand man," he said, "She's going to ruin the city of Hondo." This is what's happening in the public. I have a hard time understanding how the public... I can be out somewheres and I, I try to recruit an employee, doing, we need, we always need, looking at the Hondo paper, we're, we're hiring all the time, it seems like. We're hiring all the time, it seems like. I've been told more than once, "No, I don't want to apply. Whenever she leaves..." They didn't even give me a name. "Whenever she leaves, I'll come apply." That's the reputation that Ms. Davis has in the City of Hondo. Right? She's always... You and I had... How many conversations did we have about the fact that she did not like our employees to talk to us? Right? Remember? We had several employees. At least once a year, I would come and ask her, "Why are you not letting these people talk to us? Why do you do that?" She blamed their supervisors. Mr. Vial last week brought it up, that he was in the owner's manual. He said, "Show me in the owner's manual where it says for them not to talk to us." Right? By God, we were at a Christmas... Yes. I attend a Christmas party every year. She had a problem with one of the employees. She wanted to know why he was talking to me. "What were you talking about? You had no business talking to Councilman Torres? Why?" She has a guilty conscience. Ms. Davis knows exactly what she was doing. Again, there's no reason for that. Why do you think she fought so hard when we went to try to change the charter review for the nepotism? She don't want our relatives working in the city because she knows that they're gonna come and they're gonna drop her under the grease. They're gonna drop her into grease and say exactly what kind of management she's running. It's a very hostile management, a very hostile place to work for the City of Hondo at this moment. And I don't... I... You know, I can't just go on and say that we're just gonna blow it off. You made a comment to Ann-Michelle, I guess, or somebody, that we had a divided council. We've never had a divided council. You're right. You are very right. Now we even have our own employees. We got an email that have come divided with us. One of them, I went to school with. She literally told me the other night, "Shut up, be quiet, and let people come in in November and start all over." After 12 years that Ann-Michelle and I have put in this council, pretty close to 12 years, everything that we've done, everything that we've done in our mind has been for the betterment of Hondo. Now we're being told by one of our employees just to shut up and ignore it. Let somebody else come in in November and do it. That's how divided we are. Two of the people that spoke in her favor, they've only been here two months. One of them was a friend of hers. She got that job at the library. The other gentleman, he did business with her in Castroville. He said it on the email. They managed to get rid of a Hondo fellow that was doing the parks. They run him off. Guess who came in? A gentleman from Castroville. That guy's been here two months, and he's sending us an email of how good Ms. Davis is. Yeah? I don't... This is not right, and I wanted this to be in private. One of the ex-employees came to my house on a Sunday crying. When I came in and dressed it with Ms. Davis on a Monday, "Oh, no, it was just a joke. Oh, no, so-and-so was on medication, so he's allowed to sleep during the meeting." Run me off. Convinced me that everything was okay. As far as I'm concerned, what she did to that employee, I would consider it sexual abuse. Because that's not right. And again, I always had her back. And she knows it. Everybody here knows it. If anybody defended Kim Davis, it was me. I defended her in the local bar. Whenever they told me that she was out there saying, "Oh, we don't pay her enough because she's a female." That the only reason she lives in Hondo is because we made her move to Hondo. She says that to her own employees more than once. If I remember right, she knew exactly what the stipulations were. And her pay, I think, is more than average. I think she's getting paid very well. But yet, she's out in the community and telling staff members that she doesn't get paid enough because she's a female and that she only lives here because we made her move here. You know? And I apologize because I'm just jumping all over the place. She has... I mentioned this to you, and I'm gonna mention it again. She tries to... Or she doesn't try. She does whatever the heck she wants, and then you have to intervene. The other day with that alley, Councilman Villa doesn't even know anything in the difference about tools. And right away, common sense told him, "What's the question? Do this." Instead, she held it against the developer. And I'm thinking that she held it against a developer because she didn't like the developer. She didn't like the... She doesn't like the developer because he works with Ann-Michelle. That's what I'm thinking. It was a no-brainer. Should have been handled. Instead, it took five to six months to let this guy continue working and moving on with the project. You always have to intervene for her, with a school, with a hospital, anybody that has something to do with dealing with her. Now we're having to do that. John told me the other day, or three Saturdays ago, "Well, we need to let the professionals do their job." That's what John told me. He says, "What's happening?" And he says, "We're listening to everybody that calls us. We're listening to these residents that called you and Ann-Michelle and everybody else, and we just need to let the professionals do their job." Well, I don't know about you guys, but I took an oath, and I'm doing the best that I can for the City of Hondo. And if John feels that way, I'm sorry, but that's not... If somebody calls me with a problem, "I'm gonna get ahold of you." Now I've been getting ahold of you. I used to get ahold of her. Now I'm gonna get ahold of you. That is their right to complain to us. I know all these people that complain to us. Now we're being told we can't even talk to them. We can't even call their supervisors to ask what happened over there at the water leak at the corner of Seventeenth and whatever. We're not allowed to talk to them. She's sent emails and texts to all the employees, "Don't talk to the councilmen. If they call you, you need to invite me immediately." She has told people, "If you don't get straight, I'm gonna fire you like Abby." Who does that? Who does that? That's bad. Bobby and Ann-Michelle don't want to share their things. I'm gonna share just a little bit of what I have to say. It's just... I'm sorry, but I cannot sit back and continue and support having her as a city manager. You know, she's out of control. She's very, you know... She can do and has done whatever she wants. She needs to be held accountable for the streets, that nothing has been done. And John feels different. That's fine. That's his opinion. Somebody needs to be held accountable why we're still at the starting line. Not even 10 feet of curb have we done. Yet, prior, we had city business was being taken care of. I had... We have these employees crying out to us, reaching out to us. I had one guy that works for us. He said, "I can't believe Johnny Villa is not supporting us." He said, "He was my coach in Little League, and I have always respected him. I see him every weekend, and he's not coming through for us." I'm asking y'all, you guys, we need to do the right thing. And the right thing is that we make this the City of Hondo, not the City of Kim Davis.
I've got a question, Mayor. What is... If we're gonna have executive session, what are we actually gonna discuss in executive session?
One of the things we were going to discuss is how to proceed with the investigation. I was gonna discuss with you different individuals that do the investigation based on the complaints that have been filed. The council has that option. Proceed with the investigation, or the council has the option not to proceed with the investigation and just make a determination.
I don't... I don't know if this is a proper time to ask, but I've got questions that I need to ask, legal questions that I need to ask Frank.
That would be... I would recommend that be in the executive session.
Okay. That's where I'm heading at. And I understand perfectly now. If y'all don't want to speak anymore, I'm gonna speak. Okay? What Eric has just mentioned, all these people that Eric's got going to him, and we decided last council meeting that we were gonna have an investigation. I started doing my investigation myself with employees, and I've spoke to many. And the thing is, right now, I'm kind of in agreement with Eric because out of all these employees that I've heard, that I talked to, and a lot of them came to me. I didn't go to them. A lot of them came to me finally. And all these employees have the same complaint about Ms. Davis. And I find it hard to say that why did all these employees mention the same thing about Kim? It's the same... It's the same problem that Eric's addressing to everybody else here right now. And I'm not saying that... I know we're all split up right now, but it's like I told Mayor, we do have a problem. I understand that. We do have a problem with our city manager. And I think that's all I'm gonna say right now until we get to executive session, where I do have some questions that I need to ask council about before I make my decision on all the other stuff and what we're gonna do with Ms. Davis, whether we're gonna keep her or get rid of her or whatever happens.
Counselor?
Nice, long speech. Mine may be as long. I'm sorry. I kind of like to think the best of people, and I learn over and over and over, you're gonna be disappointed, and I am disappointed. I am disappointed in people that I formerly held in high regard. And I'm just not sure where the best place to start is, except to say that the City of Hondo has become another casualty of 2020 and COVID and delays in things that should have happened but didn't. Now, we have a council-manager-type government where the council does not run the city. I know. Hang on. The council sets policies, the council does things, and the manager and his or her staff run the city. The charter spells that out. In Section 3.07, under Pro... Point 3, Except For Purposes of Inquiries and Investigations As Provided in This Charter, not individual. The City Council shall deal with city officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. The City Council shall not give orders to any such officer or employee either publicly or privately, except as otherwise provided in this charter. I'm sorry, my friends. If we didn't break that, it is bent badly. And I intend to bring a complaint. Now, that sort of provision is emallicent charters for the protection of everybody. Because when you have me or anybody else going around, whoever is the manager, and talking to employees and say, "You need to do so-and-so," or "What about so-and-so, this, that, and the other," and leaving the city manager out of it, you destroy the trust that is necessary for an organization to work. That has happened. I'm sorry. That has happened. And when a council member goes to an employee and said, "Hey, you got a problem? Well, you know what? I'm sorry. That may not be expressly prohibited, but ethically, I have a problem with it." Some of the things that have been mentioned here tonight that we're saying Mrs. Davis is guilty of, the accusers are guilty of the same. Yes, we've had disruption over the last two months, over the last two months because of some things that came to light in early July that then were brought forward by a councilperson and have ballooned into where we are now. Your reference to the city secretary, I'm not sure whether you are saying that there was not a problem with the city secretary because we know that there was. We remember that.
Oh, I don't know. I don't work in the office. All I'm telling you is the comments she made to me.
But...
I wasn't involved.
If you will go back and look at it, the reason for our previous city secretary leaving was, you know, this was not a problem of Ms. Davis. The section has been made... There's been several times that she lies. I can get away with anything. Okay. You know, some of the stuff that's been thrown out tonight, I'm not sure what it amounts to defamation. Yes, we've had emails. We've had emails from disgruntled former employees, and some of them, we can't go into their reasons for not being here. In terms of the nepotism, this was from the Charter Commission, not from Mrs. Davis. The nepotism clauses in our charter and our charter revisions are very similar to those across the state. I will acknowledge that it's a small town, and it may be hard to find somebody, but the nepotism things are in there, in the charter, from a group of citizens, not from Mrs. Davis. In terms of going to Castroville from five or six or seven years ago and asking for opinions, I don't know. Some of the stuff that I've heard tonight tells me more about other people than it does about Mrs. Davis. Sexual harassment? You're gonna make that charge?
No, sir.
And in terms of the pay, I've heard this before. I don't know what people think that a business that has a $27 million budget think that the top person should be paid. But I do not agree that our city manager is overpaid. But I do not agree that our city manager is overpaid. I'm sorry, I did not go and contact former employees, and I don't intend to do it, because I don't think that that is to the benefit of the city of Hondo. My dog in this fight is the city of Hondo, the community, the organization called City of Hondo, the employees, which is where the rubber meets the road, and we have good ones. We have little problems from time to time, sometimes people have to leave us. I don't know if my dog's gonna come out of this all right, but I don't have real estate, and I don't have a business. I have my house, and I'm retired, and I don't have to worry about some of this stuff. You can take that for whatever it means. I am disappointed, because I have a context over the last several years of watching antagonism between council members, particular council members, and the city manager. And I know that some things have been done and apologized for, and then came back. And in the context of seeing that antagonism through the years, I'm disappointed that now at this point, at this point, when the city really and truly is in pretty good shape, considering everything going on with COVID, some of my colleagues feel like this is the time we need to make this thing. I'm just disappointed. You wanna talk about bullying? Ms. Davis has been bullied, right here in this room. We have decided things, and individual council members have said a day or two later, change that, don't do that. We can go back and document that. In terms of women in a position, we have a strong city manager, we have a strong CEO at the hospital, we have a strong school superintendent, they all happen to be women. I have defended each of them in this city, because they were given the B word. And my comment is still, if they were men, we might most likely not be having this conversation. I don't know what council is going to do, I know that there's some legal ramifications. Sorry, yours has been just long, mine is too.
Sorry?
Guess I'm the only one that hadn't commented mine very short, was undisappointed.
Mayor, if I may, I, I got something else to say after you get, after you get to talking.
I, I think I've told most of you, my, my concern about Kim, and we've talked about that for several years, we've talked about, you know, some of her behavior aspects that she needed to improve on, I think we've all had those comments, we had them, I guess, for the last three or four years. I do think she could have done some things to improve those personality conflicts. However, as I've mentioned to, I think, all of you, that to me, I weigh the pros and the cons, and I think that the achievements that she's made for the city probably outweigh some of the concerns we're expressing. I do feel like there needs to be some improvements. I've mentioned to a couple of y'all, you know, in the city of Hondo, when we have a problem with an employee, then they're counseled, and they're put under, if they're acceptable to keep at that point, they're put under a growth plan for three months, six months, or whatever. At the end of that period of time, if the improvements aren't made, then they're normally dismissed. I've mentioned these growth plans to y'all as a possibility to, to work with Ms. Davis, and I got blown off on them, and I don't even want to discuss them. But that is the alternative I would prefer, to, to dismiss them, because again, I think she has a tremendous amount of attributes, and she's accomplished a lot, but she has some problems from a personality standpoint. Unfortunately, I think many of the complaints we've had from pre-employees, some of them, including the city secretary you mentioned, could very well have been prosecuted. And we have a couple of more, that she did not choose to go that route. So I don't weigh their comments very strongly. I am concerned about the comments made by the employees, probably that Mr. Villa's talked about, probably mainly from the, from the public works area, these guys are hardworking guys, some of them aren't hardworking guys, and so they sometimes express they're unhappy or they're intimidated, maybe they just don't like to work. You know, we hired Ms. Davis, if y'all remember, to clean up many of the areas of the city, especially in the public works area. She dismissed a lot of employees, and some of these employees are now commenting on how, how cruel she is. So, you know, I, I have to agree that, that she has need for improvement, I just don't feel like that, that improvement's not possible, and couldn't come about with a growth plan that this council would develop. So, I am not for, for dismissing Ms. Davis, and y'all know that, and because I think there's an alternative that's acceptable and can work. But I think there's some council members who are hell-bent on fire for personal reasons. And, and I, you know, it's claimed that it's not personal with a couple of y'all, but, you know, and there's been some violations of the charter that'll probably come about against you guys. And, but again, that's my, my comments and the way I feel about it, and I, I think there is an alternative there that's better than, than dismissing Ms. Davis.
You said it, Mayor, you, you said it right when you started. Every year, every year, we, we put her in the hot box and said, you need to do this, you can't, you gotta change this, you can't be like that, you gotta do this, every year. And yet, we gave her a raise.
What have we done about it?
No, we never did anything about it. And now you're, you're still, and, and let me finish just a minute.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I can appreciate your comments, but from the word go, you've been on her side. And I, we feel that you've been on her side, okay? First of all, you should have been neutral, you still should be neutral. Instead, here you are, saying how wonderful she is. I'm not saying that, that she's a bad city manager, I never said that. I don't have, Johnny's right, she's done a lot for the city, a lot of good for the city. It's that one other things that she hasn't done.
Reason I can't be neutral, I work with her closer than any of y'all.
I understand that.
And know more about what her activities are.
But, but that, that's not, again, you're the mayor, you should have been neutral. And you haven't, because from the word go, you were convincing Johnny and Mr. McInally on which way to go, and how did, how did you get there?
No, I'm gonna interrupt you right there. Nobody convinces me on what to do. I was elected to be a representative for the city of Hondo. I wasn't elected to represent Kim Davis, and I wasn't elected to represent Mayor Danner. And I'm, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead, not that y'all, y'all brought it back up. You mentioned, John, that we're talking about all these allegations that previous employees have come up with, and, and this and that. Well, I'm gonna tell you, the people that I talked to, or the people that came to me were not previous employees, they're actual employees right now, and they're afraid of this lady right here, they're afraid to talk because they're afraid of this lady, because she's gonna retaliate on them, and they're afraid to get fired. Everybody needs a job right now. And I'm not taking sides anymore, I'm just expressing what I, what I've been told in the last two weeks. I've been behind this lady 100% ever since she came on board. But I want the right thing to be done for the, what's best for the city of Hondo, not what's best for Ms. Davis, or Mayor, or Michelle, or Bobby, or me, because that's not what I'm here for.
I agree.
You know?
We are, we are here for the city, and...
I understand it, and then another thing that the mayor said...
The mayor is here for the city.
Let him finish.
I'm sorry.
Go, go, go ahead, John.
The mayor is here for the city as well. We are here for the employees. I just want to say that there are very, very, very few of our city employees who work directly for the city manager, they work for their supervisor. They may have the misperception that she's gonna turn around and fire them, but if they're doing their job, and they have a grievance with their manager, or with the whole system, there are ways to handle that, which protect them. If they choose to do that, that's what they need to do. Talking and bellyaching, I'm sorry, to whoever, whether it be a councilperson or in town, doesn't really help their problem, and doesn't prevent them or cause them to be fired. There are procedures, and there are protections that are built in. There, as we look back at people that have been let go from the city of Hondo, it's all documented.
John, but I, I, right now, right now, I'm not talking about people that have been let go, I'm, I'm actually talking about employees that are employed right now with the, with the city.
I understand their fear, but I don't think it's warranted.
Well, as far as I'm concerned now, with my little investigation that I, that I've done, I, I think it is warranted. I think it is warranted. And I'm, I'm not gonna make, being, y'all don't mention any names, I'm not gonna mention any names, but I'm gonna give you an example of what's going on. This lady complained to me about this certain individual that worked at City Hall, and I've told her, if this person doesn't want to work, if this person doesn't want to do what you tell her to do, fire her. Fire her, that's, those were the exact words. For, and then Eric and I talked about it, about this particular person. And Eric and I decided, and this has been maybe a year or so ago, and Eric and I decided there's something there that this lady won't fire this individual, because there's something going on that this lady doesn't want out in the open.
Well, that's what you mean, Ms. Davis.
Ms. Davis. This person apparently was demoted, or I don't know if you, you call it demoted, she, she got, she got reassigned to a different position, where she wasn't be, she wasn't gonna be directly under Ms. Davis. And then this, this, and, and, and what I'm getting at is that this individual told Ms. Davis, if you fire me, this is gonna come out in the open. And that's why I feel that Ms. Davis never fired her, for the reason that this other, this employee had something on her that she didn't want out in the open. And, and, and who are you gonna believe? Who, who are you gonna believe? I get told, told one thing, you get tell another, told another thing, and, and who do you believe? Do, do, if an employee comes to me and says, Mayor has said something, do I believe the employee, or do I believe Mayor? Do I believe him just because he's Mayor? No. I want to know who's telling the truth. And there was a, a next, a former city employee called me way back then, and now he's calling, he called me once again for this reason that we're going through. And I told this employee, if you are right about what you're telling me, if you're right and Ms. Davis is wrong, this, you and I go to Ms. Davis's office, and we'll sit down and talk to Ms. Davis, and I'm gonna find out whether it's you lying, or I'm gonna find out whether she's lying. It never, it never, it never came to that.
He didn't want to.
He didn't want to, so there was something there. There, there's a lot of pros and cons on, on all this. And, and the way I feel right now, I need to, I need to believe the employees that I've talked to, because, because all of them has said the same thing about, about Kim. And I'm not saying, you know, I've been 100% behind Kim all, all along, because she's done a good job with the city, she just has a problem. She's got a problem addressing the employees, the way she talks to them, the way she cusses at, at them, and that's one thing, we didn't have an evaluation this year, because all this came up. But the prior two years, we had an evaluation, we even gave her raises. We had an evaluation, and, and we all agreed what she needed to work on. And has she done it? I don't know, because it seems to me that things are getting worse than what they were I had an employee call me, he's, he's an employee right now, he called me right before last Tuesday's meeting, and he told me, well, I already said he, so y'all know it's a he. He went all about what he knew, what he did, I, I mean, this guy's a genius, according to what he was telling me. But he called me to complain about Ms. Davis. And I asked him, if I decide, all this is laying on me, because I know the way you, you feel right now, John, I'm, I'm up in the air right now. Whether she stays or she's gone, it, it's on me, and it's been on me for over a week. This employee told me, if Ms. Davis stays on board, I'm out. I'm leaving. I said, well, you can do whatever you want, if Ms. Davis stays. Now, two, two days later, Ms. Davis tells me that this employee had told Mike Schmidt, I don't know why the council just don't lay off of you, off of her, they ought to just let her do her job. Okay, who am I gonna believe? Am I gonna believe her, or am I gonna believe the employee, what the employee told me? And that's why I have a lot of questions for council before I decide, in executive session before I decide whether my vote's gonna be to keep her, or to get rid of her. And I've heard a lot, a lot of bad things about Ms. Davis. And I got an email right here, where she's calling me an idiot.
And I...
She is, the email's right here.
Not only, not only that, I heard, I, I've heard that in development meetings, and what was that other meeting, Amisho, do you recall?
ELT.
ELT meeting, where she, she, in, in the meeting called everybody on council idiots, all the councilmen.
Because of this... According to this, this, this letter was left in Michelle's mailbox, it wasn't left in my mailbox, it was, it was, and Michelle brought it to my attention. This email, from whoever this individual is, how did the meeting, how did meeting with Mayor Danner and Johnny Villa go? How was worried that Councilman Villa was gonna go, was going to turn on you last night? Her response, all went well, not worry. He continues to think, he continues to think, you know, who is spearheading this, and other, and the other three are being ridiculous, talking about them three. The probability of him changing his vote are zero, me, he's an idiot. It will be fine, just have to wait till they're turned out. And this type of stuff is what I've been hearing from city employees, and now she's doing it to me.
Mayor, I move that we, we...
Mayor, I move that we close.
May I make a statement, please?
Ma'am?
May I make a statement, please, on behalf of Ms. Davis?
No.
Well, I was going to ask Ms. Davis to make a statement. Do you want her to make the statement?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I got to find what I did with it. To the extent that these allegations are related to a complaint being investigated pursuant to ordinance number 1232-08-20, I do not waive the rights afforded to me under that ordinance or any other laws, including the U.S. and Texas Constitution, by providing this verbal response.
Sorry, say the last part, about providing what?
This verbal response. Councilman Villa, I didn't make that. I don't know who said I made that. I'm just telling you. And I have made improvements based on the feedback the council has given me every year. I have gone through, council, Mayor Danner is aware of various trainings that I've been to. Mayor Danner, as I've said before, has, you know, he comes into this office day in and day out and understands where I stand and he's seen my interactions with employees more than anyone else. Again, it's hard to refute any specific allegations not knowing the sources of the allegations and having a way to respond to them specifically. So therefore, you know, I want what's in the best interest of the city of Hondo. That's all I've ever wanted. And I did provide counsel with a list of my accomplishments over the course of the last several years. I have never stated that I was perfect and I owned when I said something about a council member two years ago when it happened, I owned it because I said I would not be held hostage by any employee and have them threaten me. I stepped forward and said, they're not going to do that, I'm going to come forward and I'm going to own it because I don't expect people to keep text messages from two to three years. It's just what it is. You know, I have worked really hard for the city of Hondo and it's unfortunate that we've come to this point and I think that's all I have to say at this time.
I think it's time that we went ahead and moved into executive session.